We'll reconvene this meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee and continue on our meeting for the purpose of discussing the FY19 budget. At this point in time, I will open the floor to public hearing. I will let you know that this is a meeting of the school committee. This is not a public forum meeting. We will invite you to have an opportunity to express any questions or thoughts that you have from our last meeting or from discussions you've had in the interim. We may or may not allow another opportunity for that during the meeting, but it will not be a back-and-forth dialogue like our last meeting was a little bit because we appreciate your patience in being here thus far and waiting for this, but we have some work to do. Would anybody like to make some comments before we begin?
Valerie Haggerty, 46B, Lake Street, Millville. I have not gone through the full recording of the May 30th meeting, but I did get through the during one of your meetings, I'm not quite sure which it was, when Dr. Hahey came up and presented his, basically, like only solution that he could find for the grade situation slash classroom sizes slash budgetary issues at Millville. And he came up with a 1-2 grade class and a 3-4 grade class. I'm just wondering, because we have never seen this before, and he said the only information he could find was from a school down in Rhode Island that was in receivership. I'm wondering, as a parent, more of what that is going to look like and try to understand how it's going to benefit the students that are in those classes. I do know that Hope Dale did have a situation where they had combined classes, but I don't know too much about it and what the rationale is why one child is chosen to be into that grade, into that classroom compared to another child not. So, I'm kind of curious of what that's going to look like.
Okay. I think you'll hear some of that during our discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Justine Rovito. I live in Blackstone. So, I guess my question is about the percent of cuts per school and how those decisions were made.
Okay. Well, I was going to have Lynn. Lynn talk about how this recommended things were made, but I don't want to put her on the spot. We were going to have our business manager talk about the process that the leadership team went through in recommending these cuts. So, just so everyone is aware, the responsibility of the school committee as a committee outlined by the laws of the state of Massachusetts are to review and approve the budget. So, it is not the responsibility of the school committee to build the budget. So, the idea that, you know, the school committee starts at zero and decides that we'll have 12 teachers or five of this or five of that, that's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to look to the leadership that we in fact put the responsibility of the superintendent, in this case, his hands, and really to recommend to us the best way to serve the students. And then we look at things like our district improvement plans, the school improvement plans, and saying, did what come before us, did their recommendations address these needs that we said were the priorities? So, our strategic plan, our district improvement plan, do they meet the priorities of the school? So, there were no cuts that were made. You're losing 10%, you're losing 5%, you're losing 15%. That was never the indication. What was indicated was an idea for fairness, that no one school should have a perceived advantage over another school in terms of class sizes, in terms of support services that are available to them, that they would be equitable across the district. And so, the leadership team with the superintendent, with the business manager spent weeks and hours and days looking at the whole picture and recommending to the school committee. And so now it is our responsibility to look at that picture and say, you know, let's review this. Does this make sense? Are there some tweaks that we might recommend to make sure that the goals that we have in our mind, and we will spend a little bit of time tonight talking about what are those things that we want to protect and secure no matter what, no matter what the budget. And we will spend some time doing that tonight. But there's no percentage by school. There's no, you know, everybody gets 15% off the top of their budget.
I understand that. So, I manage budgets as well for, not obviously for school systems, but, and usually when budget cuts come, they are, you are given a target. So, you have to cut X dollars or X percent. And so, based on what I did, and I did back-of-the-envelope calculations, what I found was that it seemed that elementary schools were being cut more so than the high school. So, as a parent of an elementary school child, I just feel that that people have the right to be heard on that because our children need those teachers. I send my child to school to learn. They're not going to learn without teachers. He's not going to learn as well in a class of 30 as he is in a class of 18 or 20 or 22. So, those decisions, and I understand that they are at the principal level and the administration level, but they do affect us and they affect our kids and their ability to learn. So, when we're talking about protecting assets or protecting what we want to, I think we should look at those teachers as the number one thing to protect because they are what are teaching our children every day. So, I just, I beg and I plead with you, please look at it with that lens as a parent because it impacts our children. And so, I understand we don't get to make those decisions, but I just want to make sure that it's fair to all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Frazier, father Kylie, 28A, Lincoln Street, Millville, Mass. I agree with my predecessor here 100% first of all. However, I don't think that we should look at it sort of as protecting assets. I think we should look at it as protecting what we're doing. I agree that we should be looking at teachers and the importance of them. But I do have one little thing to say. I really don't think teachers should have to reach into their pockets all the time. I think that the people that are investing, meaning the towns and the states, should do that. They should reach into their pockets. I think the teachers have taken it, and the administrators have taken it sort of on the nose for far too long. And I think that we should realize that, but we also know, given the last meeting, that that's not easy either. I mean, we're sort of between a rock and a hard place. I also want to say one more thing. I'm sorry if I'm taking too much time. Not only teachers, but what the school is offering. I know that I'm going to bring up something that already has been agreed upon. I don't think that the Chromebook should be looked at as replacing teachers. I think that the Chromebooks should be looked at as part of what the education and what we, what you guys, meaning the district, is actually providing. And then do the balance. I'm not sure how much taking out the Chromebooks is going to add to helping getting a teacher. I think that the numbers for the Chromebooks are much lower than we think they are. We know what they are because we see them, but I think that the value might be a little bit underestimated with the Chromebooks, given the fact that they might be doing something that the district is trying to push into the future, and it might be important that we don't look at it just as an asset or just as something on the budget to just wipe out. I know the teachers are very important. Let's not forget that they are. But let's remember that everything that we're doing is part of this budget, and it's difficult, but we should realize that what we're cutting and what we're not cutting might be a little bit more than just doing this. Like you say, it's in the words. It's not in the numbers. I hope that my message here is well received by the group because again, I mean, you guys are doing a lot of work. You're doing a good job, and I feel that that should be appreciated in the value that from the school system to the communities is understood instead of being just a number. I hope, maybe I'm repeating what someone else has already said, but I think that that's what we should understand. Okay? Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Richard Stearns from Millville. My question for the board as a whole is, there's a good chance if the override doesn't pass, that when we go back to look for the $39,000 at the Millville Town Meeting, that it won't get approved. My question to you as a group is, has the board decided already or is the board going to decide in advance of that vote to go to a super town meeting? I know that's not an easy question.
Not an easy question. What we learned this evening, for those of you who were not here at the 5 o'clock meeting, what we learned this evening is that the school can proceed, the district can proceed with a joint community meeting, I'm calling it super town, joint community meeting, if it so chooses. And we have not had that discussion about whether we might so choose. We need to have that discussion, and we will have that discussion. We have not had it yet.
Okay. My, just as an opinion and nothing more than that, I think it would be very useful if the people of the town of Millville knew where the school committee stood on having a regional meeting ahead of having a special town meeting to recertify the budget because I think we could end up saving a lot of time if everybody knows ahead of time the school committee has every intention of going to a super town meeting should the town of Millville not basically pick up that additional money. I don't think anybody really loves the idea of going to a super town meeting. It pits two towns against each other in a way that is probably very negative for both of the towns. I don't think anybody up here really wants that, but that might provide the appropriate information to people ahead of time to understand that what the foregone conclusion is if the town doesn't basically make that, make that choice to approve that additional money. I think doing it afterwards is okay too, obviously, but it means that people will go and then there's potential for additional negative impact if people feel like their ideas or their vote at the Millville Town Meeting is overridden, wrong word, choice of words, is basically made to seem meaningless again. And there will certainly be people of that perception. So, I just wanted to know whether that was in that, whereabouts that stood and just provide that thought.
So, where that stood is different people who heard the same message at the same meeting who aren't sure what they heard in terms of what the law is. So, our next step will be to check and see what the actual law is
Sure.
in terms of how long we have to wait before we can do that
Mm-hmm.
and what kind of notice we have to give to do that. Because our, for those of you who have been coming and listening all along, and I know you're one of them, we have all along said we need to get the dollars that the students in this district need, that we are a board selected by our towns to represent our towns, but represent them on the board of a school district. And so, our goal has to be to support the needs of that district. It has to be.
Absolutely.
And so, we, while we understand the crisis in Millville, while we understand the ability of Blackstone to do more, we have to look. And so, we as a group voted three weeks ago now, before the Blackstone meeting, to pursue every dollar available to us. And I do not believe, I'll speak for the group at this point, that that has changed in the last three weeks.
I would just clarify that. We agreed to vote for the additional $100,000 agreed upon by the finance committee, and we agreed, you know, I don't think that we agreed, we chose not to go further on the floor of the town meeting, which we could have gone up to our certified number. And we chose, you know, the Blackstone people who were on the floor that night chose not to go above the $100,000 number recommended by the finance committee, even though there was available money on the floor that was going to be transferred to free cash. And we were like, whoa, free cash money? But we did choose not to do that because we thought that the $39,000 that would equal the Blackstone about $100,000 was doable, more so than if we went for an additional couple hundred thousand dollars from a sweet, a street sweeper from Blackstone. So,
Sure.
we made a choice to try to, the Blackstone members on the floor that night, made a choice to not go for additional funds above that $100,000, that that $100,000 was absolutely discussed at our last
Community meeting.
town, community meeting. And I, for one, absolutely said we should go for that $100,000. So, I don't know if other people thought that we as a committee were not going for that $100,000, but we did take a vote shortly after and firm that up. So...
And we did recertify that on the 30th. So, we have recertified. We have a budget dollar amount that we are asking for the towns. If the towns don't have the ability or choose not to, we will take the steps afforded to us.
Understood. Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
But we will do so legally and once we're not wrong.
I would think of nothing less.
Thank you very much.
I would say, Jane, that I thought at the end of tonight's meeting that I heard Millville say that they're thinking about holding a town meeting sooner than the override vote, which would then sort of go, get to the issue before we would have to choose that. And I'm, I personally am hoping that we see a meeting notice very shortly that doesn't require us to take the next step.
Right. It sounded like they were going to see if they could call a board of selection meeting to discuss a special town meeting.
A special town meeting.
It's possible over 14 days that they're required to post it, though, that if they don't get it in in time
Right.
maybe that you're talking about having a board of selection meeting on the day of the, of the election or the ballot. So,
Yeah, correct.
if they all end up being moved by the time those votes are counted.
Right.
Yep. We don't know. Anyone else? Please.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. Cecily Doyle. Just a couple of questions since we were here last week. This handout was given out or emailed, I got it last week. Has anything changed in the class structures per grade level by school since we met last week? And any money that was, I think, put back in? We had a few things that were discussed last week. Has a commitment been made by the administration and the school committee for that to be used for staff positions? I guess that's, those two questions. And then, just one other statement regarding class sizes, and I know it was talked about a lot last week, but I think the impact on the early elementary grades, and I'm going to say K to 2, K to 3, is significant in terms of what we're looking at at class size. And I think there's enough research out there in a lot of different places, from real estate people to education people, about you're going to get more bang for your buck if you focus on what you're giving your children for education in those early years. You can spread things out a little bit more when they're a little older, but you're not getting back this. And without that strong foundation, these children that are coming into our district in the next, this year, and moving forward in the lower grades are going to be at a tremendous disadvantage if we continue to look at class sizes like we're looking at right now on this piece of paper.
Thank you.
I don't know if there was an answer to any of the thing I had earlier. So, nothing has changed. We haven't met since that Okay. point in time. And so, that's kind of the purpose of tonight's meeting, to decide if we want to change some of those things. I will say that I do appreciate people coming up and speaking. I hear the fear in your voices. I hear the shakiness. The nerves are up here as well. This is, this is a trying time for all of us. So, don't be afraid to talk if you do have something to say. We're asking for your thoughts and ideas before we start this meeting, but then we're going to get into our meeting. So, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet who would like to share something? Yes.
Hi, my name's Chovana Tatro, and I'm an ESL teacher for the district. This is my first time at a meeting, and I'm coming here to advocate for the ESL department, which you might not know about because we've done a really good job moving our kids through learning English, gaining proficiency, and working with the teachers. But this year, we have been threatened with a 28% cut to our department. I'm not sure how that happened. I'm not sure who decided it, but 28% is a huge, huge amount. We have 80 kids throughout the district, pre-K through 12, who need our services. They need, they need help. They need to learn English. They need to become a part of our community. Their families need help becoming a part of our community. And I feel like a little bit that maybe we got hit so heavy because people didn't really know that we were there, but we were there doing a good job, and maybe that's why you guys didn't know. We haven't, you know, we haven't been the squeaky wheel. I know it's not fair to compare departments, but I just want you to know that there's 80 kids in the ESL department. There's, give or take, 300 children receiving special ed services. There's 2.6 teachers in the ESL department. There's 29 in the special education department. We have one para. They have well over 30. We have zero team chairs to do administrative work. They have over three. They have a full-time administrative assistant. And I, I don't say this because I don't think any of theirs is warranted. I do. I think they need everything they get, but we need all 28% of that back. We just worked very hard for the CPR, for the district, and we did a really good job. You guys got a great report. Our only citation was for curriculum that our department has no control over purchasing. I know that your goal is to support the needs of the district, and I really ask you to consider strongly why this is up for 28% cut. Just like special education, we're dealing with civil rights here, and we're barely meeting the needs of the kids as we are. We are, and they're doing well, but there's, there's no slush in our department, I can assure you. Everybody's spread. Do you have any questions for me about what we do?
Erin does.
I have a question. You mentioned how special ed has a team chair and administrator. So, if your department does not have that type of position, who, who is doing that?
I am. Even though I'm .6 of a teacher, I spend at least half of my time doing administrative things like translating and coordinating interpreting services. Tina Poirier also does some of the paperwork for that. I do almost all of the parent communication, the interactions with Desi, and the updates and mandates and things like that. So, yeah, we do it in, in our department. That's part of the 2.6.
And you're the .6.
And I'm the .6. And that would still have to get done. So, if the .6 got cut, that, that .4 of administrative duties is still getting done. So, if we're, if we're left with 2.0, it's really 1.6. So, that would be like JFK having an ESL teacher, AFM having an ESL teacher for two days a week, the high school having nothing, Millville having nothing, and the middle school having nothing. So, even though JFK and AFM have most of the kids, you're not going to be servicing about 25 children. Yep.
What is the law?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
What, what does a day look like for an ESL teacher? When you're saying servicing, can you just give us what
Yeah, absolutely.
what they are doing for
Yep. An ESL teacher, I think either JFK or AFM is a, is a nice example. There's about 25 students at each of those schools who have come from different countries and are learning English. So, let me think. The AFM teacher pulls kids from third grade, and she works with them in English proficiency skills and reading, writing, listening and speaking, getting them to be the same level as their Native American peers. She has a class of third graders. She pulls a class of fourth graders. She pulls a class of fifth graders. She pulls a class of the beginners, the first-year kids who have come here who are still learning the basic communication skills. So, they're going to get double classes. She goes in and supports, sometimes in math, sometimes in other classes, depending on her schedule, supports them in class with, co-teaching with another teacher. We pull kids for RTI. It's the same as a teacher in the sense that they're teaching five periods a day, but we're, we're giving the kids the vitamins they need to succeed, you know, and they really are doing well. Our kids that have ESL every day in kindergarten through second and in third through fifth don't need near, do not need the support that big districts need in the middle school and high school because they're, they're up to par. They're up to their English, Native American peers.
So, you mentioned civil rights and some, everything you just painted for us. Are you also, or is someone, it's more than translation, is someone giving them this information in their, their language so they can understand it?
Yes.
And it's...
Yes, that is part of the ESL department.
So, who does that translating?
We pay someone.
Services.
Me. Well, sometimes we pay.
Is it the ESL teacher or is it...
Sometimes we pay for translation interpretive services. Sometimes the Department of Ed has the things we need, but it's the ESL's, ESL department's job to get that into the hands of the parents. A lot of times, they don't, they don't know how to advocate for themselves, although I will say, just like there are special education advocates out there, there is a growing population of ESL advocates that are reaching out into communities and helping families understand that they have rights to get exactly what they need under civil, civil rights law for their...
May I just clarify something with Alan? Is it, I mean, in Massachusetts versus Rhode Island, regular ed teachers are now getting additional training, working with ELL. How far are we in that, the class they take
Yeah. So,
as a district?
So, Massachusetts changed the laws that govern ELL a couple of years ago. And of course, no money followed all of that. And as Chovana has stated, the translation alone, the requirements under this new law are very expensive and time-consuming to procure. And it is the classic unfunded law amendment, if you want to speak to the...
To answer your question, teachers are required to have 15 hours of ESL training, just like they are required when relicensing, to have 15 hours of special education training. That does not make them an ESL teacher, just like it does not make them a special education teacher.
I have a master's in ESL, so I'm not arguing the point.
Okay.
I am just trying to clarify because we have a lot of people who don't even know what ESL I am just trying to clarify, because we have a lot of people who don't even know what ESL means. So, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify for the audience. So, again, I do have a master's degree, so I know that, but.
We have an excellent percentage in this district of teachers that are SEI endorsed, which means that they have participated in that training. Yeah, we are well over 85%. We have done very well, which was part of our CPR, in which we brought in classes here and encouraged teachers to go other places. And yes, we have done an excellent job.
Okay, that, that was, I just wanted to see.
I apologize.
I, I knew that some friends in the district had been going to classes for ESL, I just didn't know how far along we were because I knew it was an unfunded mandate.
Right, that's also linked to their license as an educator, so they need to be SEI endorsed. Do you know what the law is, how frequent the students need to work with an ESL teacher?
Yes, it is determined by their English proficiency level. So, students who, the, the levels range from one, which is no English at all, to six, which is proficient as a native speaker. So, children in, in levels one and two need two or more periods a day, children, students in levels three through four need one to two periods a day, and students in level five through six need to be in an SEI teacher's classroom, and they need to be monitored for four years by an ESL teacher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
So, can I ask a question? So, Alan, I just have a question. By reducing the .4 at the complex, based on what the information she just gave us, just what is the plan with that reduction?
Dr. DeFalcone and I are discussing that next week.
Because it sounds like it's like the special ed require, like you have to meet these.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I actually missed the exact timeline she just gave, but she said something about four years after, even after they're proficient, are we following them for four years?
Oh, there's four years?
And is that? So, are we going to be able to maintain what we've?
That's, that's gonna be the challenge.
The 80 kids.
So, this probably shouldn't be listed as a cut until we know?
Yeah, until we have a plan. That would be, almost be like cutting a special ed position and saying, we'll figure it out. I, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, there is, yeah, I'll address that. But yeah, it's a good point, Tom.
But I think from an audience perspective, this is the perfect discussion, and an audience, I mean anybody who's listening or goes to a town meeting, this is a perfect discussion about those things that people don't think about when they think about schools. You know, you don't think that there are 80 students in Blackstone and Millville who don't have English as the language that they speak at home. That's a lot, you know, a lot more than any of us would probably think of. And when I started on the school committee, it was maybe 1/10th of that number. So, that's how quickly those programs are growing. And so, there are a lot of things that, that make our budget go up. And there are a lot of mandates that the state doesn't fund, and, and that's one example of that. And so, yes, we asked for a great increase in, in the budget this year, but we truly believe that it was, was based on need. And so, we will make some hard decisions to reduce that, and the leadership team has made some hard decisions. And so, I think at this point, we will move forward, and I'm just gonna ask, we asked a lot of questions last week and asked for some more information last week, so I will give it over to Mr. Himmelberger and Mrs. Cobb and have them just kinda give us where we are at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm gonna start, and if I misspeak, I'm sure that Mrs. Cobb will correct me.
I'll try.
So, this is a stressful process, as you all have seen and as you, most of you experience. So, the state is in the process of debating supplemental budgets to FY18 as well as their FY19 state budget. And we have been, superintendents, business managers have been disappointed over the last couple of years by how the state has not understood the need, as we heard earlier around the Foundation Budget Review Commission's report, because that is how we determine the chief funding source for public education, Chapter 70. And so, there are signs last Friday and Saturday that the state budget process is starting to understand the, the desperate needs of public school districts. We have a governor and a chair of the Board of Ed that are charter school proponents and are also major vocational school proponents. That's okay, but who's our proponent? And so, we have done an awful lot of legwork with our legislators. And Cameron Spilka, who's gonna be the new Senate President, July 1, is an old school committee chair, friend of mine. And so, last week, the Senate announced additional funding for several line items on the education budget at the state level. And one major one was around regional transportation, where they went from 62 million to almost 68 million. We will see some serious increases there, both for supplemental for end of FY18 as well as for FY19. They also decided to fully fund Circuit Breaker for next year at 75%, as you heard Jay Sullivan mention briefly. So, while the total impact is not known, this is what has happened since we met last Wednesday, which has a direct impact on reducing the reductions, closing the budget gap. And so, we are staying in touch with what is going on in Beacon Hill. Now, by law, they're supposed to have their state budget deliberated and signed into law by July 1. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't. We're hoping that it does because that would help us dramatically, because the timing is very delicate, as you saw with both Millville and the override and a potential town meeting, along with what the committee decides to do based upon what happens in those areas. So, it is almost an hour-to-hour, day-to-day thing, because we're, we're seeing some hope that we might have additional funding that will have a, have a significant impact on meeting our, closing that budget gap. I think it's imperative for everyone watching, and if two friends tell two friends tell two friends, the override in Millville is critical, June 19th. That's a critical vote if you are a Millville resident and care about your town and how it can catch its breath and move forward. And it's also critical for us to get what they voted on the town meeting floor, plus the additional amount that was recertified by the committee last Wednesday. And that amount is $39,000, 360 and 362. And that doesn't seem like a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but it is a big lever, both on the impact on the Millville ledger, as well as on the fact that if we do not get it, we would lose the $100,000 of additional funding from Blackstone that they voted for. So, that is a critical piece of what we are talking about, along with the additional funding that we are starting to see may survive the budget process at the state level. So, it's, it's await and see, day by day, hour by hour, as to what the impact will be to help us do more with less, but that less can be less. The gap, we can close a little bit. And that may, or that will, obviously have an impact on looking at class size, understanding the ELL requirements, seeing how we can move forward with the least impact on delivering education to every one of our students. I don't have exact dollars, we are still looking at it, but it's good news, it's the first good news we have had in this budget process, and it's the first good news that we have seen from the state level. Now, what we hope and pray for is that parents will not continue to choice out their students, because that means next year, that's another bill coming due, if that number continues to rise. So, we still believe, because of the quality of the staff that we offer, a very good education. But it's not going to be as good as it would be if that original number that the school committee voted was being able to be met, the 24,139. 7% is 7%, there's just no way around it. And we all have what's nearest and dearest to us and our children. And it's our children, whether it's your own children, or it's your children, whether you're a teacher in that class, or it's my children that I handed diplomas to Friday night. Those are my kids.
All right, let's get to numbers. Let's get to numbers.
So, is that the music playing in the background, Mrs. Reggio?
It's it.
I don't have numbers.
No, I know, I know you don't have those, what the, but in terms of what we talked about and the numbers that are in front of us, were there any changes to the, to what you gave us last week?
No, the only thing that I believe Mrs. Vannaco had, had put in play and voted was the $40,000 position for the tech, which we had in the budget, which we took out. Mr. Bozan is here, if anyone is interested. We also took out the $28,000, but there's an impact on that for that technology, whether that, that's up to the committee, whether they, whether we want to revisit that. But the, the glimmer of hope may, may be, next week, it may be $200,000, it may be $100,000, we don't know. But that will be real money. So, we have to wait and see. But in terms of changing, we're still in the holding pattern, except for what was discussed last week.
When, do you have updates, or?
Yes, we did, we did hear some good news from the state level. So, if I heard correctly from Mr. Sullivan, that we will, we will hear a Chapter 17 number by July 1st. So, but we also see the school choice number going up too, because of the, all those cuts. So, I, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna give a certain number because I, I don't know how the, the bottom-line number will change for the revenue. But it, it is a revenue problem for the schools and it is a revenue problem for the towns. So, let's get the citizens to vote for the override. And also, it's a long, exhausting process for, for us. Many of you find out on May 3rd, it was a shock, but I would feel the same thing. But for the leadership team, we've worked since February, March. School committee reviewed the, the whole budget, and the 7.5% increase is the least that we need to have. But we're told we're gonna cut 1.5 million. And we have been depressed for three months, and we just look, sit at the conference room and look at each other, and it's very sad to see the district going downhill. We've sat together in the auditorium at, at the beginning of the year, and we want to, together, we want to move the district forward, but unfortunately, decisions have to make, be made to meet that 1.5 million cut. So, so for Circuit Breaker next year, if we stay the same level claim as this year, and if the state funds the Circuit Breaker at 75% instead of 65%, we will see a 45,000 increase as special education offset. But number is a number, it's a budget number, any moving student can, can change the whole picture.
Yep, we have learned that.
Yep. So, I think it's, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please, go ahead.
I think it's important at this point is to have a number to work with. Everything's a moving target, so we may find some money, so, for example, after open enrollment, we may find some savings in house insurance. So, after we have the budget, we can make decisions later on to see if we can put teachers back to the classroom.
So, I, I think it would be important for the school committee at this point to talk in general about what those goals and priorities are, whether it's we're considering our district improvement plan, whether considering the school improvement plans that we just received at our last meeting, whether we're considering our strategic goals and visions, kind of what is that? Last week, we just kinda went through, and whoever hit a page, hit a page, and, and we weren't really directive in why we're looking at particular things, or what are our, our goals and our priorities are. And so, I'd ask for just a general conversation for a few minutes here about, you know, what are the one, what is the one, let's say we get another $50,000, $40,000 from Circuit Breaker, where does it go? What's the, where does it go? Where does it, you know, what are the cuts that are on the board that have to come back in first if we don't put them there already? Or what are the, you know, where, where do, to people, I mean, we certainly have heard that ELL is a focus, we've certainly heard class size is a focus, we've certainly heard elementary school students, and we know that, we know all of, of those pieces, but where are, are the priorities? And for as long as I've been here, we've, we have said that, you know, our goal and our mission is, is the delivery of educational services to our students in the district, to all of our students in the district. And I'm sure that our, our principals and our leadership team have fought long and hard to figure out how that, how that works. But I think it's now our turn to figure out what are the things that we wanna safeguard or we don't wanna lose.
So, so is the question, based on what we received on May 30th, this, these cuts got us to where we needed to be if we received the 140,000?
It's the recertified budget.
The recertified budget, okay. So, we don't need to make any further cuts from this. So, now, the question is, if we, if we received money?
Right.
From the education gods, what would we?
Where would we?
What would be a priority? I, I would absolutely, 100% say, how can we reduce class size? I mean, we knew going in that that was detrimental to our students. I think none of us disagreed with that. I think the issue is that trying to put those teachers back in and reduce those, that's, that's also a big number. So, $45,000 doesn't get us even a full teacher, you know? So, then I guess the question would be, and, and I don't remember which teacher mentioned it last week, but then, is the focus putting in, or, and I had a question this week to figure out where paraprofessionals were located within the district to see if, if we can't reduce class size because you can't put another teacher there, can we at least offer some support so that you have more flexibility in differentiating learning within that group of 20 to 29 or 30? So, for me, it's reducing class size if we can, or? So for me, it's reducing class size if we can or or increasing some support.
I agree, that would be my number one.
Yeah, so when I was working through, and we were doing now essentially line by line. I know we never discussed it at this table and I apologize if the six years of doing it, I did it without explanation, but my point is to essentially, it's about $70,000. Every $70,000 is going to be a classroom teacher. So for me, as we sat here last week and made motions and found, removed things, it was in hopes of being able to restore where. The problem is, is there's, there's so many, it's not one or three, it's 12. And that is certainly at the top of my list. Is teachers in front of the kids. The ELL, I, I mean, to me, that falls under special ed and we have, we have to we're, we're, we have requirements we have to meet. We, we have to have special ed teachers, we have to have ELL teachers, there's no there's, I, I, I need an answer on how we're servicing those kids if a .6 is going away, that is felt that is, for 80 kids, so. But, I mean, my, my priority is the bodies in front of the kids.
We've, we've heard from the townspeople, we've all received emails about concern at the elementary level and the elementary school teachers have really come out to, to share their concern about their class sizes.
Anything else? Others?
So I know I asked in an email, can we just like state what we're thinking if it ends up the great, the split level at Millville Elementary? You replied to my email, do you want to answer it?
Sure, sure. So in order to try and be equitable, we did look at class sizes in Millville and we, we looked at grouping two grades together. Certainly not the ideal approach, but it's one that we are looking at. And, and Mrs. Schaefer and the teachers that have volunteered to take those split classes. I will be calling the superintendents in Hope Dale and Holliston to see if we can observe those classes and see how they deliver their instruction. The other piece of that is the makeup of the class and in analyzing the grade specific students that would be in that split. And that, we are also gonna try and get some information from the folks that have already done it in Hope Dale and Holliston. So I think that's the, the next steps for that. I think we all, and Mr. Tringali said it last week. Everybody in this room has the same priority. And that's the, putting the best teachers in front of the best kids. And we, and we can do that. So that, I believe, is all of our goals and objectives and top priority. And so if we do get additional funding, that's what we will do. And we will start with the, the class sizes at the elementary grades.
So I, I think, and, and again, we haven't met since last Thursday, but then we did have a pretty informative email from the president of the teachers' union based on, you know, class size versus split grade levels. With that being said, if we find the funds for, for teachers, would it be an option to put a split grade, a split level class in the complex for one and two?
Yeah, I think that everything is
And then another one would be three and four. Like it would be, it would go up.
Absolutely, but I think that's
Because that would reduce the, the first and second grade down to 24. With that one extra class. I mean, and, and then but it's not our biggest impact as a committee, I mean, and because there are, there are two more pages of you know, of blending the purple team and I, I don't even think we know the full effect of the high school reducing the counselor that we were desperately hoping for, the duly certified. I mean, there's many things on the list.
Absolutely, there's so many moving parts. And that's what's frustrating about trying to get the best mix. And, and this is still going to be ongoing work with almost daily meetings between now and the end of June. To get to the right combination. Agreed.
Anyone, I would like to ask Sean to come and talk to us a minute since he's not on the roof of his home. And as many of you know, the hope for the plan was to go one to one in the middle school and have an additional support person. And we remove that as a budget item next week, but it doesn't completely remove the cost because it was part of a lease agreement and I may have another plan that he can share with us.
Thank you for asking me to come up. It's a very, Alan and a few other people said it, it is such a balance and technology's not cheap. So it's very hard for me to come up and speak what's best for my how, what I look at as my children and their parents, which are the teachers in so many ways, and ask for money and ask why we're cutting. And just to be right and short and to the point, since last Thursday, of which I was off, and yes, I was on a roof. And coming down a ladder pretty quickly to get here, because I heard that things were being cut. But I, I backed off and let it take its process. And since then, the position, I will tell you that while we do need it, we can give it up. It will hurt support district wide and this, this district is systemically, and it's not just in technology, you know, cut, cut, cut over the years and it's impacted. And I was amazed going back two years, almost two years of being here of how the teachers are culture wise, when I heard, well, you know, they wait 10 days to get a light bulb put in for their projector that's eight years old. They're phenomenal when it comes to that. I would like to think that we've made a difference in almost two years. But, so the position is fine. Our plan is to use interns and to talk about what we started talking about last year, putting in place a student help desk. That's really gonna help the high school and the middle school, but not the elementaries as much. But that's the current plan that we're gonna try to speed up. With regards to the Chromebooks, I just wanted to reiterate, and I'm gonna hand this around. There are two different pages off of Desi's site, I tried to save, so I double printed on each side, there are two different sites that specifically state since 2015, this has been the plan to do computer-based testing from grades three through 10. Next year will be three through eight. We've looked at multiple ways, moving Chromebooks, maybe getting a couple more PCs to make it happen. But as I told you guys at the beginning of the year, there are going to be a lot of surprises and I've stated that, but now I'm showing you where on paper where it says. There is no paper ba, based unless you want to write an IP for 1731 kids. There are certain accommodations. So if we could look at bringing back the Chromebooks for the middle school, it would be appreciated and otherwise, I don't know who's gonna have to talk to Desi, but it's not gonna be made. Again, I just, I appreciate you giving me the time to talk to it and I'll, I'll answer any questions you may, you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Sean?
So I believe that Wen had mentioned that based on the numbers you wanted, there was like a package deal, like you had a discount or something based on the numbers?
Where they make their money on a lease is afterwards, they resell them or they'll take them apart, they'll sell parts. So I know Wen had come to me originally last year, started looking at leasing, she was like, I don't understand, it doesn't, you know, these numbers don't come out, we get the finance company. And that's where they, they make their money on what's called asset reallocation. Some of them are reusable, some of them are not. I could tell you that a Chromebook after three years
Is not.
It's pretty beat up. We have some that are two years old that, you know, they come in and we're able to fix a key or do whatever. But that's where they make their money. So there is, there is a substantial difference in cost if we were to buy them out outright.
Right, but so, okay, that's, but this 28,000 that we were cutting for the one to one, that impacts the carts you also had in the budget?
It will impact the financing amount because you're now taking the carts, and when you say carts, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a storage cart with 23, 32 Chromebooks in it. It will impact the financing.
So the numbers that we see are going to change because of the numbers.
I actually just talked to the
Trying to answer?
Yeah.
Yes, so by, by, by taking off the carts, we are spending 5,000 more, 4,900 more on the rest of the lease. We're able to do a lease, but at a higher price. So if we take off the Chromebooks, instead of saving 28, we're actually saving 23.
To really cut it down to the student, it's $60 per student.
Got a question.
Yes.
So can you just briefly touch upon the pros and cons of students bringing in their own devices?
BYOD is a possibility. As long as they're logging into the Chrome browser, they're essentially getting something very similar to what we do on a Chromebook. We do have free and reduced here. So I don't think, I can tell you right now, we have four students in the high school that opted for BYOD. And one of them has come back and they wanted to go with a Chromebook. Just because they didn't want to drop the device, it happened to be a MacBook, so it's a little more expensive. And I think mom and dad got to them and said, you know, if you drop that in school, I'm gonna buy it instead of a $200 device, it's, you know, a $2,000 device. It really comes down to cost. But when it comes to the Chromebook, the Chromebook and this Mac, as long as I'm running Chrome on it, the difference is the filtering. So when they bring that device in, if my son had this device and he came into BMR and he was gonna use it, it's still gonna be filtered, but not when he's at home, which with our Chromebooks, they're filtered. Now, also part of that is recently the admin team and myself were talking about particularly the high school. With the Chromebooks, what we're doing is, is we're putting essential resources for those students at the high school so that they can actually go in. And Mike, what was one of those resources that we were talking about? I hate to put you on the spot, I'm just drawing a blank. Student, student handbook, there were a couple of apps that'll be readily available right there with the Chromebook.
Thank you.
And if I could touch on ed tech, so I'm asking based on, and Tanya and I have talked about this multiple times, and I keep coming back to computer based, computer based testing. But a Chromebook is exactly that, take the Chrome out, it's a book. It's a inexpensive device, but it's a book. It's a way for these students to get resources, in the old days, I had an encyclopedia. It is a book, it is their way of getting, there's a lot of teachers who use in classroom, all the resources are there. So if we have a student that doesn't have a device, I hate to say, but we gotta get them a device. Because they need to get to those resources. And it's not just in our walls, learning is 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So it's when they're home. They don't have anything at home, they're at Starbucks, they're on their phones, but it's, it's constant learning. That's the ed tech portion, but I keep going back to the computer based testing.
I would entertain a motion to reconsider the purchase of the Chromebooks if somebody wants to make that motion.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I mean, I think to be fair, we all just sat here and said our top priority is staff. So it would be, it would be hard to make a motion to spend money on something that wasn't one of our top. I am, I am absolutely interested in, in technology user fee, you just hit the nail on the head. You said it's $60 per student, per year for our lease.
That's what the lease.
For the, for the new middle school lease. Why, why, why can't we talk about the parents buying them, why can't we talk about a technology user fee that would cover the expense of that?
Have you watched the news lately with Nipmuck?
Yeah, we can't.
If that's the answer, then that's fine, I'm not, I don't even want to get into the whys, but it, we can't have, we can't have our parents or our PTOs funding staff, but we can let them, we can let them do things like this. I, I am, I'm upset to hear that BIPo wanted to, to make another donation of a cart and then that somehow didn't happen. I, I actually didn't even hear the whole story as to what the roadblock was, but that would have been another cart in that building funded by BIPo, their, their first one was funded by BIPo.
They couldn't afford a full cart. They couldn't, they couldn't do 32 Chromebooks.
They wanted to donate to the lease, to the lease of three years, so they only commit for the first year.
The cart that's in the complex right now was a full purchase by BIPo, it's not a lease. They bought them outright.
They did, two different steps, I think.
And then another teacher had a fundraiser to have. We cannot fundraise to pay the other bills, but we can do stuff like that. So if, if it's not something we can talk about at this point, I
No, we can talk about it, I'll give you some answers. So Webster actually did it.
I, I actually don't want the, I mean, and, and you just said four kids be, bring their own device to high school. I have two, so apparently I'm 50% of, and it's not because I didn't want all the schools, it's because they already had it. And I will tell you how wonderful it is, and they have to be signed in to, to BMR to do their work. So they're at home and they're on GoGuardian. I see it pop up on their screen constantly. There are math, there are math sites that the teachers try to use that are blocked from our GoGuardian, which they're trying to, they can't use them in school, so it's a wonderful thing, but it works on my kid's device too. So I don't think we should be so negative about it if it's the only option we're going to have for next year. I think we need to find the positive.
I'm trying to answer your question, so I'll let you finish.
And we also, when we took the vote last week, we said just for one year. We just need one year.
And since I've come on board in two years,
Has it been?
I'm just getting the history before me coming. There was a plan, an original plan to do
There was.
And it got cut, it got cut, it got cut. So me saying, hey, in order to do computer based testing for those three grades, we would have only been at one grade level.
Our plan was to get the high school one to one, and we are there. So we did not cut that, that, that is done, it is a successful plan that we most of this committee was able to put into place. And that was hard. That's hard to do with no, no percent increase on budgets, no, no additional contributions from our communities. We got it done. It wasn't a cut. We have four great, full class grade, four, four full class levels with one to one Chromebooks. And they're the kids that are leaving us with the technology. The kids that we're taking it away from this time, because we can't talk about other ways to pay for it, are the ones, they're, they're going to move, they're going to get it when they get there, because that's already in place. Or hopefully next year.
The upcoming eighth graders will get the seniors.
But you can answer the question now.
Okay. So a district north of us actually did do user fees. I can't say exactly how many people actually paid it, but I was told that it was voluntary. And I just confirmed that with Mr. Jay Johnson. Here, it can only be a voluntary fee. They had a lot of the kids that did not pay the fee. And when you do that and you're doing G Suite and you're doing Classroom, you've got a kid in there that doesn't have a device. You can't do that, it's like taking their book. You have to give them the book. So who's held for that when we don't receive the fee? I'm just saying what happened. They ended up saying, you know what, we're gonna include the insurance, we're gonna include the device, free and reduced, every kid gets one. They no longer charge a fee, a user fee. Nipmuck near us, most recently, started doing it. And I believe it was for free and reduced. And it didn't go over well. Trying to implement it, trying to put it in place after they already gave them the devices. So that's why I'm, I'm not half, I'm receptive to it if you want to do it, whoever's gonna collect the money. But how do you say no when they don't give you the money for the device? And we're held, we have to give it to them. So it's kind of, I don't know how to answer it. I like the idea.
And I'm just concerned that, I mean, again, we go back to state testing. Everybody's favorite. But we have to have it for three through eight. Right?
But it says on the paper there. It's been coming since 2015.
We're not the only ones that aren't gonna have it.
So that's our plan?
I, I, we don't have a plan. I, I think our plan I, I think our plan is-
We just said with ESL-
They're state mandates.
They're state mandates, and we're, we can't go in there without a plan.
Civil rights.
But when it comes to something that's also legal, legally binding, mandated, we're just saying, sorry, out of luck. We have different priorities.
And I understand.
I just, had I, I voted no initially, so I was not allowed to make the motion-
I just wanted to have the information in front of you again to make a decision. That's all.
So I, I-
And that decision may not be tonight.
No, I mean-
It may not be.
I just needed again to bring that information to you and get it in front of you, so that you knew. It's not just computer-based testing, though.
Yeah. It is, it's much more. I mean, but if we're using the, the legal argument, then his point is just as valid. And it is more than that, and I was just going to ask-
I just wanted to help clarify with the state testing, that not only are we, are not allowed, we cannot order a request for anyone in grade six for paper, paper base unless you have an IP that says it, you can't get it. But we also have a window, so we are given a timeframe. So I just wanted to mention that because I, I know Sean didn't remember that, but we have a timeframe for each test that we have to do for every single student for every grade. So it's not an open window to test whenever we can get them done. They give us a very strict timeline, we're even told which order. Math first, English, then science tech. We can't even change that up. So just keep that in mind, too. We do not, there's a lot of constraints on that, that I just wanna make sure everybody knows.
And there's no time limit to, to each test, so put that in the equation as well when you've got an elementary student that, and we've seen it this year, that they can go the full day, they can go have lunch and then leave.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll be very quick. Federal law that used to be called ESEA, which is now called ESSA, that governs public education across this country mandates that we must test all of our students in three through eight in a competency determination, and the states are allowed to determine that. And Massachusetts has determined that it's computer-based.
But if we don't do it, we then lose federal funds.
We have, we run the risk of losing federal funds, yes.
Well, and I go, I still go through the, even if we can move carts around all day long till the cows come home. If that's the first time I'm sitting in front of a Chromebook, I'm not very good at that test.
It's going to be the first time our third graders are sitting in front of a Chromebook.
Not necessarily. Yes, there's no more at this point. No more at this point, we will have another public hearing, but not right at this point.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Not, not yet.
I guess the federal fund comment answered my next question, like, will we just push back to the state, like somehow, like, how do, how do we, how do we push back without getting a penalty?
We get a penalty.
Good question.
Yeah, we get a penalty, exactly. Right, yeah. I mean, this isn't, this is not the only non-funded mandate that we have in front of us. But it, I mean, there are, there are lots, and we find ways and we will-
Figure it out.
Figure it out, yeah. Not sure how.
But we will.
I just, I, just so everyone knows, 'cause you know I, I feel very strongly about this, I do not see technology as a testing item. I see technology as an incredible learning tool, and I think that we are in the 21st century moving forward, and we talk about things like biotechnology and, and all kinds of things, and I think we are not in the industrial age where everybody sits in a classroom in a row and, and learns the read, write, and arithmetic, and some point in time. It's important, yes.
Sean, I'm sorry, I know you're way back there. When, so if we were to explore, I mean, I, I know many parents have reached out to many different people here, and with an offer to help raise money or whatever, so if we could get $28,000 together through whatever funding source, and came, you're allowed to take a donation of that much, Alan, if, if we got that together? When do you, when do you need that by in order to order it in time for, I mean, right now, we're talking about possibly being on a 12th budget, so really, in the scheme of things, we're, have bigger issue than this, but-
It'll take approximately four weeks to get them in, and then it'll take another week, two, week and a half to get them image, as we call them, re-provisioned, the provisioned so that they're ready for the students. I mean, ideally, I would like eight weeks, but last year, by the time budget was done and everything, they came in the door and we had four days before the kids came back, and we just, everything just stopped, so.
Would they need to raise the full three years? Or just, they'd need the full three years, correct? Raised.
That's 28,000?
Times three. Times three.
Yes, times three.
Times three, right?
But the- It's totally different than asking a parent to purchase one, because you're, you're asking, you're saying, we're gonna raise $28,000 times three to donate, to lease Chromebooks, so we don't even keep them. Like, the, the kids don't even have them in high school. So, and then what happens when that lease is up? And how, how many years is it for?
Three years.
So three years, every, the sixth, seventh, eighth graders are gone, the, the Chromebooks are rotating, but you just told us after three years they're not good enough, so we're still need something in three years.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you a little tidbit, so part of our lease is a fair market value buyout, and I did this in my last position in my last district. I'm not banking on it, but it is a possibility. Chromebooks are really, I hate to say, more disposable than a, a desktop or-
It's a search engine, it's not, it's no memory, it's not a processor.
You are correct. Well, there is a processor, and there is memory, and there's all the state drive, but it's not like your typical desktop or laptop. They do still have a value at the end, hopefully, you know, there's still all the keys, but they do still have a value. So you can actually go to an asset recovery company, and as I said, I did this in my last district, we did it with desktops. You say to them, what will you give us for the, this HP unit with this Chromebook model? And you go to a bunch, they come back and they say, all right, well, let's just say for sake of argument, we'll give you $20. Now, we can either return it or sell it for $20. And the buyout through the, through the, typically through the leasing company is a lot less than what the actual value is. So it is an option, we haven't had to exercise it because we haven't been through a full lease, we're only in our second year. So, but I think it's definitely an option that we should look at, as well as, I mean, there's a lot of our technology here that we've tried through the old access points to sell, but they're way past, you know, anything marketability, I think the Chromebooks would have more.
How much are they, so, how much are they individually if we bought them? So if, if any of the parent organizations or just a new group of people who said, hey, we, we would feel better if we actually buy them, buy them versus the lease. I know it will impact your cart price and that kind of thing, but then you, you can get 100 for the sixth grade class or whatever that number is, move forward in the initiative, but not have to come up with $28,000 times three in, I don't know, a month or whatever, a couple months.
Well, it's not just buying the Chromebook, there's a license for Chrome, the management side of it, so that you can do the things, the sort of things that we're doing. There's insurance, and there is the filtering, CIPA compliant filtering, which is GoGuardian, also gives us stats on what students are doing curriculally, well, where they're going, I should say. So you'd have to build all that in. To answer your question, $260, give or take 10, depending on how many we buy.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna put with accessories.
Are there other priorities that folks have other than teachers and classroom goals that are important?
That are on this list or just in general?
Just in general.
So I, I think another one that we've already touched on is the extracurricular activities for the kids. It's a priority to maintain a balance for things available to the students, for me.
Anyone else? Do you like to invite the public up again?
May I just add, I think we also need to, and I, and I think this is, in speaking to Jason DeFalco, just trying to develop response to intervention at the various levels so that we can focus on student need in a way that will meet their learning needs and be able to help drive instruction based on data versus anything else. So, I mean, the scars was part of that, and so I think that's another development that we would, I would like to see as response to intervention, especially at the elementary level.
You were adding that as one of our important-
Just, I mean, I think it's something that it's-
Event focus.
Needs and the fact that we had to cut that.
Yep.
So we never did direct where, or earmark where any of that money went last, last week, except for level funding music, but-
I don't wanna go there yet, because I think we have to, to see if there are others, or see if there are other things.
Plus, we don't know if we'll get that money from Melville, so we need-
But my, my concern, my concern is if we are going to be able to add one teacher, and it's going to look like a one-two split in Blackstone or three-four split, if, if we're getting ready to send teachers out to observe these, then someone, some, some people from that building need to be included on those visits. If this is a possibility that we're going to be able to somehow free up something, Alan, you seem very hopeful that there's state money coming in. I just want to see any teachers that could possibly be affected by that included in those visits, conversations, planning, so it isn't a, but I, I, I mean, I had intentions of doing it last week on, but I didn't, I, I, we talked about regional agreement last week, we talked about the split versus the higher class size, so I, I'm not even saying that I know that that's where that, the essentially $60,000 might be right now. I just don't wanna come into our next meeting and it's gone because something broke.
Something might break. Is there anybody that would like to come forward?
Please.
Hi, I'm Jessica Gaudreau, I'm from Sycamore Lane in Blackstone, and I also happen to be the vice president of the Blackstone Elementary Parents Organization. So I just wanna speak to clarify a couple things about the Chromecart books, or Chromecarts that we had attempted to get for the schools last year. Over the summer, we had gotten an estimate for what it would cost to piggyback on the lease that the district was already doing for Chromecarts, I believe at the high school, could've been the middle school, I don't know. And we had, based on that estimate, in our bank at that moment, enough money to cover two-thirds of a three-year lease. And we were told that we couldn't do it because we couldn't guarantee that we had that third year. However, if we can talk with the technology, with Sean again, we again have a substantial amount of money in our bank this year, if the estimate is not vastly different from last year, that we think by now, we have, like tomorrow, we could write a check for $5,000 to get started on this process. And in October, we have our largest fundraiser of the year, it's the Move-athon. And this year, we raised $8,000 more than previous years. And we have increased our fundraising quite a bit over the last couple of years with the collective effort from the team that helps us, our volunteers that help us, the teacher's support, the principal's support, and parents who want better for their kids, or just to not lose the essentials for their kids. So we just wanna put out there that we are again open to the idea of doing this, and yes, a lease may not be the best in terms of then after three years you don't have them, but that's three years worth in the kids' hands, getting started, getting used to how to use a Chromebook before they get to grade three. This year, because we couldn't do the Chromebooks this summer, but we still had students who would need lab space to do their MCAS testing, we provided Mrs. Cardy with about, about $5,000 to buy some kind of technology thing she could use in a space other than the technology labs. We bought like Ozbots, I think they were, so that it could free up some lab space during the time that the kids were coming for their technology special, so that they could be doing the MCAS testing. So we are, as a organization, doing our best to help out in any way that we can, and we are committed to continuing doing that. So I just wanna put it out there that Bipo is still open to the idea of contributing wherever we can, as long as we can vote on it as a committee. But we are here to support the kids, we wanna provide fun when we can, but we also wanna supplement things that are being cut from the budget for the essential education, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you remember the price you were quoted last year?
So I didn't expect to speak, which is why I'm passing out here. So I don't have the numbers in front of me, so that's why I say we don't wanna, again, commit and say that we have exactly two-thirds, because we don't know if the price has changed from last year. But at the time, over the summer, we had approximately two-thirds ready, and we're committed to provide that final year by this fall. So we were ready to pay for a three-year lease in a three-month period, and it wasn't allowed to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Never be nervous, we're just as nervous as the rest of you.
I think it's up to the school committee to decide how you wanna accept the donation.
Yes, it is. So yes, if somebody wants to, if somebody wants to, to donate something, it's up to the school committee to accept that or not. I, person in the back half and then Monica.
I'm Monica Cardy, I'm the technology teacher for all the elementary schools in the district. I literally teach every elementary student from pre-K to five. And I came here just to listen, but we're talking about technology, so I kind of, sitting in my seat bouncing a little bit, listening closely. To give you guys just an idea, at the most, I'm saying kid never misses a special, there isn't a fire drill during the special, there isn't a field trip during my special, I will see them at the most 19 times in a school year. That is it, in a single school year. On average, it's been about 14. You break it down, between Monday holidays, PD days, field trips, fire drills, any other drills we have, specials, presentations coming in. When you say, yeah, the Chromebooks, they don't need to be there. During the time MCAS is happening, when you're saying the testing's happening and this, I don't have a lab for that window of time, because that lab, for the most part, needs to be used to do the testing, to complete the testing. So those Chromebooks would allow grade levels to completely test at one time, would free up the lab, allow instruction to be continuing. Digital technology, digital literacy is part of their world, you guys said it yourself, we're part of the 21st century, you're moving forward. Then why is our technologies holding our kids back? I know there's, like you said, everybody has their pieces, their state mandates, their different components that you're fighting for to make sure everyone's getting what they're needed. When you don't give the teachers the access, those Chromebooks, I can tell you from observing them, from bringing them into classrooms this year, I worked really closely with all the Blackstone teachers to, from grades three to five, going in with their rooms, trying to help them use them and utilize them in their classrooms. They're booked, from start of the day to the end of the day. No one can get them because they're so wanted. No one has access because they're literally booked. I have people emailing me at home, are you in your lab on this day so I can do my STAR testing? Literally an email I got on Sunday night, when are you in your lab this week? I need, I need a block, just one block. And then you're saying, you're gonna put them on a computer for here's your computer-based testing, good luck, and walk away. I can tell you, I get a new device, it takes me a month to really figure out how to use it and manipulate- I can tell you, I get a new device, it takes me a month to really figure out how to use it and manipulate it. Touchpads. You're telling kid you're going to have to use a touchpad versus a mouse the day before the test. It's a big deal! It's a huge deal! So, I'd really consider looking at that technology piece. I know there's money, we're trying to find it every which way possible. I just need to say my piece on that because you give those kids, you give the teachers access, have them have the ability to use it throughout the year, not just here's the testing window, let's usher, find, beg, borrow, and steal books and Chromebooks and devices to have our kids test on that one day. Because that's a state mandate, we have to do it, like everyone's saying, we have to do them in a certain order. We have to do them in a certain window. But giving them access all year is more meaningful, it's more promising, it's going to make them more comfortable. I've done MCAS testing with third graders and some of them come in crying and they don't even know why. Because they've, don't even know what to test. Now, you're going to amplify that by putting a device in with them? Where they've had limited technology access. If they're only getting technology when they're with me, 14 to 19 times in a school year. Those are 45-minute blocks. Within those 45-minute blocks, they have to walk from their classroom to my room, also transition back. So, we'll be generous, we'll just cut 10 minutes off. That's 35 minutes between them arriving, getting set up, logging in, then having the log off, goodbye. 35 minutes for 14 to 19 times a school year. It's just something to put in your brain. I hope that gives you a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're good, Kathy?
Okay. Yes.
So just in response to that, as a mom of somebody going into first grade, does a Chromebook teach them how to read or add and subtract? I don't think it does, the teacher does. So, again, I'm just going to beg and plead with you to find a way to keep those teachers. I know it sounds like from today, all of those cuts that were there is what we're agreeing to or what the committee is agreeing to. Is there not another opportunity, which is probably not going to be very popular with the principals, but to look back and see, is there other cuts we can do? Are there other things we can get to keep those teachers in the classroom? And keep those classroom sizes down so that our children can learn in a setting that is going to be most conducive to their learning? So is there an opportunity to go back and look for other funds in that budget?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Well, I didn't hear that that's what we were doing though, and with all due respect, I heard that we were just looking at what we have and saying, what are we going to do with, if we get $45,000, what are we going to do with it? Not actually going back line by line and saying, can we take out? I don't know, I'm not going to make suggestions because it's not my decision.
I should say that's what we are, that is the purpose of our, that's our next step, is to say, looking at those sheets, what are the, what are the items that are still on there that we need to remove? Or what are the items that we can add to replace something? So that's the next step.
Okay. But I'm not asking about the sheets of the cuts that were already put forward because those have the teachers on them. Like, are there other things in the detailed line item budgets that haven't been touched? That we, that can get opened back up to be considered to save the teachers in the classrooms? That's what, that's my question.
It's all open.
Okay.
And so, just know, I know that you sent me personally emails. I shared those emails with the rest of the school committee, as well as Mrs. Cobb and Mr. Himmelberger. And so, we continue to look at that and send, how about this, how about this? We're, we're not allowed to speak as a group like this without a set meeting, but we do individually ask Mr. Himmelberger, hey, how about this or this? So, there's a constant, there's a constant dialogue continuing to go on. For me, based on, you know, emails I'm receiving, based on looking at this. So it's, it's a constant thing. I think we have to get some agreement, but we're still looking. And I think that's...
And, and the leadership team's meeting daily? Pretty much daily?
Daily.
Daily.
Several times daily.
Several times a day with when, but just, you know, it is a fluid process. And, and while that bottom-line number is what is the critical thing that builds the budget upon, that number, if we don't receive from Millville, is the critical piece we'll ask the community to take a stand on. And without that, it gets even worse. Doesn't get better, gets worse.
Understood. Thank you.
So, to follow along on your questions, which are very good. That's the reason why getting to the number is so important. Because once you turn the checkbook into next year, you have a fresh balance to spend however you need it. The difference between a public school budget and any other budget, whether it's your own personal budget, your household budget, Fortune 500 companies budget, is that it is far too elastic to be judged normally. Things break, people move in, people move out. It gets hot, it gets cold, there's a million reasons why that affects a school budget throughout the year. And so, we all can be in agreement, I believe, that the, the purest expense in a school budget is quality staff, one of our students. But that can change, it can ebb and flow. If we get that number in, on July 1, and all of a sudden, we have fewer students in a particular grade, we will adjust. And conversely, if there are more students, we have to adjust. It's not etched in stone that you can't make any changes. And so, that's an ongoing process right up until the start of school and sometimes into, into the month of September. There's a million reasons that impact the school budget. And so, it's a flexible number and, and yes, we will continue to look at it with the hope that we can restore teachers, that we can find other ways to fundraise, that we can impact it in different ways. It's just, it's, the problem is, and I said it before and I'll stop now, it's just such a deep cut all at once. And so, there's, there's going to be an impact that nobody's going to be happy with. But everybody here is on the same team with the same goal.
Thank you. So having said that, is there something, oh, yes. Oh no, you have to come forward, it's the rules, it's the rules, we make everybody sweat.
I just have a question, do we know exactly when this is going to take place? Like, are we going to be in limbo all summer? My son's going into the second grade, like, so am I going to have to play this limbo? You know what I mean? Like, oh, am I going to tell him, is he going to be first, with first graders next year? Is he going to be by himself in a second grade? Like, am I going to be, like, thinking about this all summer long, like?
Stay tuned for the answer to that question.
So, like, is this by, like, are they going to let us know by July 1st, the state? I mean...
All I can tell you is...
I mean, I feel bad for you guys because you guys are doing a great job.
Keep, keep the faith that we're going to get through this. And I know that's a big leap right now. But our goal, all of our goals, is to get as quickly as we can, as early in the process, to get everything lined up for the best year we can have.
And it's very sad because I, you know, as, there's not many parents here, there's probably like three or four parents. But within the parents group, many parents are very scared and they've been talking about pulling their children out.
And, and there's a lot of other parents here too that are...
Well, like, that I, that I know of, like, my personal friends, that, like, within, you know, the first grade, second graders, they're like, oh my gosh.
We're in this business because we want to be your children's second favorite teacher after you.
Of course.
That's why we're here and that's why we do the work. And so, we will try and get the information as solid as we can, as quickly as we can.
So, with the state going ahead, because I missed that little part, this, like, in that 5 o'clock...
It's the best part of the whole meeting.
I know. But, so that money that's possibly coming from the state, is that going to be able to help alleviate the first, second graders being together and the third, fourth graders?
I can't say directly yes now.
Is it going to alleviate the teacher issue, be able to...
It may, it may help us to get where we all want to be.
So our next, our next portion of our meeting will be to prioritize kind of what goes back in. First, second, third, fourth, fifth, whatever. But I, I will, I will, there isn't enough money. There isn't enough money if the state puts back all transportation. There isn't enough money if, if Millville, you know, holds their town meeting and we have a budget on July 1. There isn't enough money to truly impact these larger class sizes or these dual class sizes that you are seeing. We, I mean, as Aaron said, that would be 12 teachers. That would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So there isn't enough money to do that. And so, we have to look at a plan that is equitable, that is equitable between all of the schools. People say, well, the, the high school doesn't look like it's, it's, it's taking a whack, if you will, of the terminology of the email that I received. Well, the high school's been whacked for many years up until this point. There's not much left to whack. The, you know, the middle school is, is looking at combined classes as well as, as the elementary school. And people will say, well, the impact isn't as great in a middle school as it is to a, to an elementary school and their, and their learning, a first and second grader. And while we would all probably agree with that, you know, there, there, we're trying to, we, as a parent, you are looking at your first grader or your second grader or your third grader. As a teacher, you may be looking at your first grade classroom, your second grade classroom, your third grade classroom. What we've charged the leadership team to do is to think outside of their own box and their own school. What we've charged the school committee do, to do is to think as the global picture. So how do we make it fair? How do we make it equitable? And, you know, 28 kids in a classroom? Not anybody's list of number one things we got to make sure we do. Probably the number one thing to try to avoid. But the bottom line is, there is not enough money to address all of that. So if you are planning, you know, that your child will be in a large classroom or that your child may be in a split classroom, that's a good plan. Because some of that will have to happen, given our, our budget. Because where our budget, or 95% or whatever we said last week is in personnel, which, and insurance and retirement. And, and now we'll have a big unemployment line if that, if, you know, the money doesn't change. So, so no, nobody wants to sit up here and say, you get a half a class, you get a half a class. It's not like Oprah, we're not giving cars. But we do have to decide, are there any other things on the list we need to protect that are on there we need to take off? Are there things that people have seen that we could replace? And then if we do have additional monies, where should we direct the leadership team to move? I mean, we've said in the classroom, but specifically, what is that?
Which one do you want to talk about?
Are we going to revisit the stipend, the school committee stipend? We never voted.
If you would like to bring that up, we can do that.
I'd like to make a motion to eliminate this, or what we're, change the school committee stipend? I don't know what we discussed. Reduce the school committee stipend.
Reduce or eliminate?
Reduce or eliminate.
I'm going with eliminate.
There's a motion on the floor to eliminate the school committee stipend, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to make sure it's earmarked towards something.
I agree.
I guess it would be...
Something is good!
We would like to earmark it towards something if we cut it.
I, I want to make sure that it is going from, I have so many lists here, I can't find my numbers.
$12,300.
Teachers, the total is...
It is $12,300 in case anyone wants to know. So it's under 1,000, it's under code 1,000 right now. For me, I'll give it back twice, but I want to make sure it's going into 2,000, which I believe is staffing. So...
All right, well, that's not the motion on the floor.
He wants it to go into staffing.
You're welcome.
Motion on the floor, so.
That was my, I, do I need to amend the motion to make sure that the money is earmarked for, from 1,000 to 2,000?
I think we can do that in an additional motion perhaps, because we still have other money we haven't earmarked either, so. I think we can put it all.
Is there any other discussion about?
What? It's not, it's not our job?
No, you guys should keep your money. I can't even believe we're having this discussion again amongst all of you. You guys deserve it and it's not your job to fund this budget. While we appreciate the gesture, I, I can't believe you're talking about it again.
Motion on the floor.
And there's a point for myself, I've said it before, you guys have jobs and I, I do. I work as hard as I can all the time I can, but at the end of the day, sometimes it's, this money makes a big difference for me, probably bigger than anybody else.
We divide it by the hours we're here, it doesn't compare to a paycheck.
Makes a mortgage.
It helps.
I'm sorry, but I didn't hear it, must have been good, but I didn't hear it. We didn't hear it, so I don't know. There you go.
Can always vote to accept donations, $5,000 from each individual member that can afford it.
We don't have to file it.
We can, we, we, we could make it voluntary, but...
Wait until we see, I feel like we should just wait a little bit longer and see if it would close the gap for one teacher or instead of just giving...
Because then it feels like we made a difference.
Yeah, and we can see what the state does and I just, I, you know, I agree with Jack, like, college kid. Even though I've only been on school committee for three months, I thought it was...
And haven't gotten one yet!
I thought it was twice a month and last week I was here doing stuff three times. You know, it's just so much more of a commitment. And, and I have so many kids in the district that I would, I'm going to be paying the money for user fees anyways, so regardless of it. But I just feel like that we should just wait and if we can use that money, like, when we really know what we're dealing with for numbers, then we decide. It's just how I feel.
There is a motion on the table.
No, motion to table.
Oh.
Is that with...
Back to the table with you.
Yeah, motion to table, the motion.
Are you, are you withdrawing or are you?
Oh no, I was just making a comment, that's what I do best. She's making wicked witch noises over there.
Did you make a motion?
Trying to figure out.
No.
Yes, I'm making a motion to table the motion until we know our numbers. Until we have a better grasp of our numbers.
Postpone indefinitely?
To postpone indefinitely?
Postpone according to his parliamentary rule. He has his parliamentary motions out.
We're going to adjust it to 1,500 and Jack's going to get it all.
Go ahead, Tammy.
I just, I mean, I, again, we are all in different positions in our life. We're all in very different positions on what this experience brings us on nights like this especially. So, I mean, I, again, we've talked about it, I would be willing to give mine up, but I also don't, I feel like we shouldn't make the, we make the decision for everyone. So if we're seven to one, we, you know, basically eliminate Jack's money from him.
I mean, I don't want to be the deciding factor or anything, but...
So, in that way, I think it should be voluntary because we're all in different spots.
Well, there is a motion to table and so that takes precedence and it's not a debatable motion.
I just want to point out...
So, it is not a debatable motion, so when we can go around and around and around. So is there a second to the motion to table?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Close. I just like to mix it up a little.
I just want to say too, that it's only one, we're, this is one year. Same thing with the technology, this is for, this is one year. We're not dissolving a stipend forever, this is a one-year.
Okay. And I appreciate that and I've heard that. But we all know that once we build a, a school budget, we build upon it for the next year and you take something out, we know it's harder to put new programs back in than it is to, to take them out, so.
So with that being said, the other 1,000 line item, which is the scholarship fund, we actually gave... So with that being said, um, the other 1,000 line item, which is the scholarship fund, we actually gave away the other night. So it has to be funded because it's paid out of, what, what was given away last Thursday night is paid out of this budget that we're talking about. And we gave away two. They need to be funded. And that was in here as.
But we weren't taking, asking to take away the whole line.
Yes. That's $1,000. We gave away two $500 scholarships. And then the other thing that would, I think would cause a problem that we haven't spent a lot of time on is the, um, $6,000 bus for the after-school shuttle that changes the start times for high school and middle school. I think we need to talk about that.
Okay. Well, let's do your first one first. There was a $1,000 line in the school committee, um, or the 1,000 columns, but it's a $1,000, it's a scholarship. We gave two to a graduating senior either who is a child of a school committee member and/or someone pursuing education.
They were awarded last Thursday night.
They were from this year's budget.
No. They, they file their transcripts next year and it's paid out of FY '19. Is that correct?
'19 or '18?
'19.
So somebody who won the scholarship-
They weren't, we didn't hand the money the other night.
No, but Jack, you won.
Yeah.
So.
The way, the way it works is you have to, you have to do a full semester at college before you can even ask, request for it to be paid out. So that really couldn't come out of this year's budget.
So it, because we already gave it away.
Last warrant.
Okay, well, then we have to put that back in.
And then it was gone.
So we gave away two 500s.
Two 500s.
It's a thousand.
Put it in because you have to pay it. 2,000.
What?
No, it's 1,000.
It's 1,000. The cut was 1,000. Okay, so that needs to go back. And then Erin, your other point was the after-school bus, the $6,000 after-school change of, is there some, is there, was there a discussion about the flip-flop of the, I know you talked to us about it, but a preference or a, I know it probably hasn't been floated by parents, but I don't, the bus time, leaving, so, so people know. The, um, there's a, the bus that arrived in, at the middle school at the end of the day that would take students from the middle school to the high school for their sports or whatever the case may be. Because high schools picked up first and then middle schools picked up. So the idea was, well, if we pick up middle school first and then high school, anybody who would be going from the middle school to the high school for their sports could just be on the regular bus that they would be on and get off at the high school and we wouldn't need the additional shuttle bus. To do that, it changes the starts because it would mean that students would be dropped off here in the morning first and at the high school second. And then in the afternoon, picked up here first, high school second. So it would be a flip-flop of start times year on.
But the students are on the buses together.
Anyway, right. So they don't leave their house any earlier, they don't-
The only people it really impacts are some parents who drop off for me. I, and it's not just 6,000. It would also be 1535 that I've paid for the Healthy Start Club this year because some parents are dropping off here at 7:10 in the morning and I don't have staff. So there's a club that runs in the morning where the students can go. So what, with that start time at the middle school, I wouldn't have to have that club because a majority of the students come at 7:20. So between 7:10 and 7:20, I've been watching, it's been less than 20 students that are here between that time, so.
What are the actual start times? The high schools at currently?
So, uh, first period starts at 7:35 and we are done at 2:02. And, um, I'm not sure what the middle-
Seven, 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 um, 7:50 students are starting to go to their lockers and then go to the second chance breakfast that they have because they opt to do that instead of going to homeroom to do attendance. And then first period starts at eight and we presently get out at 2:17. So there's just enough time for the buses to come from the high school to here.
So we're talking about flip-flop, flip-flopping those out those times?
Right, because he mentioned, I said, well, they're already on the buses together.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's when, when Tanya and I got together, we looked at the athletic budget and I saw that there was a spring shuttle and a fall shuttle for $6,000 total. That included field hockey, soccer, track and fields. We do have a handful of basketball students that we didn't have a winter shuttle for, um, that could, you know, we could eliminate that if we, if we proposed the, the change in start and end times.
So do we need a motion to change these times?
So what is your plan for the cross-country runners in the fall? Because the trails are here.
They run here.
They have to run here.
Because they take, they, they do what you're suggesting for all these other teams, but they, I mean, I've seen, I see them get off the bus. They get off the bus and they, and then the same thing was before spring sports fully start. The boys' baseball, um, I'm not sure where girls' softball goes, but the boys' baseball comes here, they take the bus over. The basketball teams actually rode, the, the JV boys rode a, any Millville bus for an hour. Everyone talks about their kids being on the bus too long. To, they, they got on here, the kid, the boys that had to play JV this year from eighth grade, got on here and went the entire route of drop-offs through Blackstone and Millville and then went to the Millville Elementary School. So that costs us nothing, I believe, because they were just on a bus that was running its route. But we do have kids that come here in the fall and in the spring. So what is the?
I mean, as of right now, there, there really isn't a plan. I mean, cross-country, I don't know how many students are coming over here. Prior to the middle school, there was a high school trail at the high school campus. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what they would like to propose, but again, I think, you know, loo- looking at those shuttles and the amount of students that are coming over, I think we have more students just in track and field alone in middle school that, um, that would come over, you know, versus, you know, any other sport that's coming.
What about leaving? What about leaving for a, a game day and with high school, like a varsity team? Getting out 17 minutes later and then locker rooms changing, does that affect start times for sports since other high schools are not starting later?
I, I'm not sure if it would significantly impact. I mean, games are starting at 3:30. We typically, if we are going somewhere a little farther away, that's an hour, we dismiss students a little earlier. Like our, our lacrosse teams for, um, for Hope Dale, students sometimes they're getting out at quarter to two to get over to Hope Dale if they have a, you know, a, a way meet that's somewhere way up north.
There are, there are start times at other schools that are later than 2:02.
And then my question would be, this, for 40 years, the high school is, do you expect anything from staff?
Well, that was going to be my question, so we're in the contract. Can we not change the start time because of staff?
In the contract, it says that the high school start, homeroom can't start before 7:30, but the middle school doesn't say anything. But we wouldn't be not abiding by what it says at the high school.
But what does it say about end time?
Yeah, I remember something being in there about being available for that, like teachers have to be available for-
No, that's only what they have to have after school for tutoring, but it doesn't have a end or, we do not have an end or a start.
So you don't expect any problems at all from a 2:02, I mean?
Uh, uh, we threw that proposal out, uh, a month ago and there was never-
We had to come up with anything.
There was no dialogue that came up with union or teachers on that.
It would be nice if there was a, you know, a decision on this so that whoever it does affect now has all summer. I mean, I, I, it doesn't matter, most places, it doesn't matter, like for me, how early, I, I, I know the earliest I can drop my daughter off for her program in school because hers doesn't start till 9:15, so for me, it doesn't work. It's six, it's 6:30, so.
I think, I mean, that's just the balance that we're, we, we, as a committee, as a community, needs to look at. There's a $7,500, uh, savings and we're looking at a 15-minute impact before and after with drop-offs and teachers coming in earlier or later. And that's, that's a balance that people need to weigh and say, is it worth $7,500 to do?
Well, and, and I think we ask people to think outside the box. And this is our, this is our box and this is our savings and, and we ask for that. So I, I personally would support the idea and, you know, to me, a difference of, of 15 minutes.
But I want answers to, to the kids that need to be here. Like, there are still kids left without transportation, so I think we need answers before we gung-ho, make a motion and change start times.
I would say to look at the cross-country tra- trail at the high school because I already know there's trees down and I'm not so certain how much our, after this past winter, our trail at this point is usable for the fall.
Full force summer volunteers for the, that run cross-country are usually out here redoing the trail. And Ms. Finn is a huge advocate of that. I, I was, I happened to be on that parent page for cross-country, so, um, I mean, they, they got the mulch donated this past summer and had the, the runners and their parents and families out here updating it.
Can I ask, do you know how many cross-country athletes we had going from high school to middle school? Because, I mean, we do have a couple of vans.
It's varsity. The varsity, varsity, middle school kids are here because sixth, seventh and eighth grade can run. So varsity cross-country comes here. Uh, but again, you have spring baseball, you have, there are other, and, uh, the winter basketball where there was no shuttle, I saw coaches coming here to pick up, um, the kids that were playing on the JV team. So I just, I mean, it does, it-
So I, I guess we-
Our kids would be getting there for the JV team. And I don't know, I mean, yes, the high school asked to come here for the baseball team to use, but I don't know that there were facilities to be able to use at the high school at the time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, we have the, we have our fields finished now, so that may be different too. I, you know, I-
There's not already left a lot of middle school sports where it's just here at the middle school. Most of our students are competing at the high school.
Anyone else?
I mean-
I just, like I said, I want answers on-
I like everything about it already and then there's the added bonus of there being the science and research behind later school start times, the older you get. I think everything about it's great.
The kids still have to be on the bus.
They're on the bus, they, yeah.
But I still get to kill 15 minutes on the bus. I get to listen to my music, do whatever, or drive my car in that much later if I need to. Those minutes make a difference. I, four out of the past five years of my life, I went to that school and if I got there 15 minutes earlier, I'd have had much better days on a lot of days. But I, everything I like about it, I think it's a win-win.
So a cross-country parent is texting me saying there's about 15 varsity cross-country runners.
I just think we need answers on those first. Personally, I'd like to go to Telstone and say, how can we get this donated for the year?
That's not a, that's not a joke.
But.
What's what?
I said, I, I guess, I guess the question is they are cross-high, they're cross-country runners.
Can they run over here?
Can they run here? I mean, I, I don't think that's a joke. I mean, I think, is that a warm-up?
I will tell you, Mr. Ducharme will tell you that at the high school for baseball, they would, high school students would run for a warm-up over to Roosevelt Park.
Yeah, they run to Roosevelt.
Sure, they do. Sure, and that's, I mean, that's why I didn't say it as a joke.
That's the baseball.
If they get picked up here, they won't have their stuff here if you have them run here. Run with your backpack, it's all good.
Well, they'll fit on the van, backpacks will fit on the van.
I mean, I, I think people have made accommodations. It sounds like the baseball team has made accommodations and the, and the basketball team has made accom- so people have made accommodations and now it's a, a flip-flop of, of those needing to make accommodations and it's still saving 1750.
I mean, again, I don't think it's a perfect solution. Someone's going to be affected with anything that we do. The effect right now is, is, is our cross-country team in, in the fall.
And it, and it may be that we, you know, eliminate a shuttle period and, and don't change the classes and, you know, that's an additional thing on the parents to have to then transport their kids to their sports or whatever. And I don't think that we want to do that. So if we can shift it a little bit, it's a shift.
Instead of eliminating it.
That's why I just, if there's a way to maybe more, since most of the athletics are already at the high school, yes, they might come here for the cross, but it's very limited here beyond the middle school basketball, which they're already here.
Right.
Very limited sports is already happening here because we just don't have the facilities.
So do we need a motion to approve the change in start times for this? Is that how that would work?
Does it change in your handbook?
Changes the handbook?
Right.
Changes policy?
So yes, we would need a motion. No policy, just handbook.
Do we have an answer on the cross-country? Yep.
I vote they figure it out.
I, I mean, I disagree with that then.
There's no motion on the floor, so.
I'm just saying I disagree with that they figure it out. That's not an answer. That's a, you, sadly, there are already groups in, involved in sports, involved in music, involved, like you can pick one, theater. They, they already feel like they're not treated this equally and I, I think it's very unfair to sit here tonight and say, well, cross-country can figure it out or, and there's 15 of them.
But it's also going to be baseball. It's, the administration's going to fig- figure out how we're going to make it work. I mean, at our level, are we doing that?
But it's going to cost money. The whole reason we're talking about it.
Well, right now, we presently know that we have a van.
Right.
So does it take, do we have some kids waiting for 10 minutes to bring over half the team and then the person goes back? It's still, it'll still be a savings.
Exactly. But we have to pay someone to do that. Who would we pay to do that?
District driver?
It's still, we've had this discussion.
I don't know if the cross-country team stays on, on the middle school campus for all of practice. I mean, I, I believe that our middle school, our, our track team, our cross-country team runs the streets of Blackstone and Millville. I mean, there's a, a Blackstone trail that's somewhere close to the middle school and high school. I don't think that they're on the middle school campus for the entire practice. So again, I don't, I don't know the specifics when, when it comes to all sports and activities, but I don't believe the cross-country team or the baseball team is stuck to one set place for every single practice. For me, it's sure, but that's, I mean, that's, that's different.
And I think from our perspective, we are looking at this as a, a, something that was listed on a, a list of cuts to eliminate a shuttle. We weren't told it was eliminating a shuttle because this team, that team, the other team, but we were told in eliminating the shuttle that it impacted the start time. Start time is something we approve in the handbook, so we have to, if we're accepting this cut, that's one of the items that we have to discuss. And then the other is if we do, we have to entertain the motion for the different start times. So the first question is, is this a cut we should keep on this list?
Yes.
Yes.
And there seems to be consensus. So then I will entertain a motion to switch the start times.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tara, seconded by Jack. Any discussion?
I just want to make it clear that the reason I brought up those sports is because in the fall, when we're sitting here and the parents come, because we weren't aware, did, were you aware, Sarah, that there was a cross-country team that came here? You know what I mean? People are going to sit, people, you, you're saying like we're looking at just the costs and just the shuttle. I get that and everything is a number on this page to me, but there's, there's 500 kids behind each number. So we are, we should be having these conversations and we should know what it is impacting. And it doesn't change my opinion of whether or not we should change start times, but I want to know what the answer's going to be to the 15 kids that don't have a ride. Because guess what? Mine is going to be one of them in two years. And if that's what, if that's what everyone wants to think is, oh, it's, it must be one of Erin's kids.
No.
This, these 15 kids are affected and that, that is more than $6,000. And, and guess who's going to hear it on the side of the field? And then people are going to be mad because they didn't go to the superintendent. The, the parents talk on the side of the field. They don't come to the school committee meeting, they don't come to the, to the superintendent. They talk to the parents that are standing there and everyone gets angry at the same time. Because we're making a decision to cut a $6,000 shuttle, which I, I, what I would like to suggest is, why can't we work this out with Telstone? They, they've talked about donating buses, uh, that are banned cut, the middle school didn't march down the streets of Blackstone this year, but they said they donate buses for that and, but it was a cut for us. So why, why aren't we talking about this stuff to them for one year? We can't afford $6,000. What are our other options for, for busing?
Is there any other discussion?
I, I think it will just be important that the athletic director know this change and that she can, um, will it still be Jill? I don't know how that all works, but I, I'm assuming it's Jill. And then she can kind of look at what that change impacts, just the same way that it was implemented. They can kind of figure out who, who it impacts the reverse way and make some alternate arrangements.
And I, and I understand the passion. I also understand the passion of the folks here who are saying, we need more teacher, we need less class sizes, we need more teachers in front of our children and we have to look for every penny and this is an alternative- And I, and I understand the passion. I also understand the passion of the folks here who are saying, we need more teacher, we need less class sizes, we need more teachers in front of our children, and we have to look for every penny, and this is an alternative penny. It's an alternative seven thousand five hundred dollar penny, pennies, and so we're looking for all of those alternatives, and yes, there will be passionate people, just like there are passionate people in this room here today, and, and they'll have their opportunity to, to come before us, and, um, and I hope they do, and I hope they don't just talk at the sidelines, that they bring their passion here. I know it's nerve-wracking, but we have to do that, so there, go ahead.
Are we just gonna say, I'll offer to check with the Telstones and see if we can work something?
For the remaining, the opposite direction? Is that what you're speaking to, Alan?
Smaller number of kids, probably.
So, there's a motion on the floor to change the start times for high school and middle school. That was seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention?
Aye.
And that passes, so we can let folks know that the time will change. Are there any other items that people want to, thank you, bring for discussion?
Um, the special ed page that we have on this list, are we confident that these cuts are realistic, legal? I mean, I just am very concerned that we're putting this number, obviously to show cuts, but, and I know we talk about, especially, a new student comes in, this, this number goes away, like, it changes, but right now, based on what we have, is this number safe?
As of right now, it's safe.
Based upon what we know.
It's less here, though.
Yeah.
I think they'd already cut three.
Well, no, things change. They can change in our favor, they can change, not in our favor, but for now, we know.
So it's four hundred and nineteen thousand, five fifty-two? Is that the total cut for that? Is that the number at the top?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did I say fourteen thousand? Four hundred and nineteen thousand, five fifty-two?
Was there something in there, Tara, that you specifically?
No, I'm just on an overall, and I guess if we didn't, then I would say specific.
The counselors, like, the counselors kind of fall under that.
Is the high school adjustment council?
That number is correct.
Four hundred and nineteen thousand.
We're confident with the counselor situation.
Confident in the legality of our staffing.
It is. It's as good as it's gonna get.
Got a question? Okay, go ahead.
So, we're, we have been in desperate need of a elementary school psychologist all school year, correct, Alan?
Since, since November, yes.
And is that person in place for September?
Yes.
So the numbers that are on here for psychologists is just these difference in what we had line item this year, due to a salary for next year. So we have our psychologists in place for next year to meet all of our special ed requirements and, at where, um, but we already have, we already have middle school one. There's one that does high school and elementary school. So we just needed one.
We'll still have two next year.
We'll have what?
We'll have two district-wide, one for middle school.
We should have three.
Oh, three district-wide.
So we, we did not make any changes to that line?
Three district-wide.
So we have three psychologists that will be in place for the. And do they work, um, through the summer? Are we paying back hours on missed contract, the?
I believe only with the E S Y program. That would be the only, and that's budgeted.
We have one for the summer?
They work the one hundred and eighty-four day teacher contract.
Oh, okay.
And then there's one E S Y.
But we will have three full-time psychologists.
Anyone else with anything else from the list? So we have.
Wait, sorry.
Oh.
The E L L teachers. Should we wait to remove them until we have more information?
Yes. Mr. Dr. Falco and I will be talking, and we will talk with Giovanna.
So we should take them off this list for now?
For now.
Leave them.
Is there, is there a dollar amount connected to them, or like, is, um, like, the point four is under the J F K piece? I assume that none of these dollar amounts matches that. I'm not sure though.
I think if you add the point four and the point two together, it's the dollar amount for the point six.
Right.
Where would that dollar amount for the point six?
Point two is on the high school list.
I saw the, I saw the, the references to, in the right-hand column, but I wasn't sure what dollar amount went with that point six as a whole.
It's the twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars.
Yeah, it's the second one from the top, on the, I'm sorry, from the bottom, but where's the point two in high school?
So twenty-nine thousand on one line?
Which is on page twenty-four of your huge budget.
This one?
Yeah. Point two is on here.
I can't put the same here, cause seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, me too.
Seventy-five thousand on here.
Wayne, do you know which one it is on the?
I'm looking.
Okay. Maybe it's part of it?
Are you, like, the exact position?
Twenty-three oh five would be the right.
Yeah, page, it's on page twenty-four.
Of this. High school one, not two?
Of that. I was looking at, I was looking at this, Jeff, the high, high cut list.
It's, on page twenty-four, the big budget is that number, which matches the number right here, exactly.
The elementary, but the high school has a point two.
Ah.
So, so the other, the other point two might be, um, embedded in the seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two. So it's actually one point two. So it's, it, it, what, it's a pivot table, so.
Is reducing ESL by one point two? What's the seventy-five thousand?
No, it's just one, one precision, and plus that two point two, E L L. So it's a pivot table, so it's just automatically added together.
So is it safe to say it's half of the twenty-nine? So we should, it's about fifteen thousand now?
So seventy-five, nine thirty-two is one point two precision.
But not both. The one point two are not both E L L positions. One is a different kind of position?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I, that's.
We can do the math, so twenty-nine, one oh one is point four, then point six is how much?
Okay.
Okay, another fifteen thousand. Point two.
Yeah, I just didn't see anything that, right, what I would imagine would match, so that's, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yep, so we had, we had, um, indicated that we were not funding the forty thousand for the tech aid, um, and so where do we want to prioritize that?
Do we have to make that decision tonight?
Nope, we don't.
We should just hold off and see how the money shakes down before we start.
But if you put that, if you just put all that tech money together, you got, you have one teacher.
Yes.
And so the priority.
Yeah, but if Millville, like, we could lose that money in a heartbeat.
If Millville doesn't, so I don't.
We have a bigger problem if we don't get that hundred forty thousand.
Yeah, we can name it and say there's a teacher, or we can just hold off and just wait.
I, I think people even let us know tonight that they need, they want to know what direction this is going.
It's not a teacher.
Passionate in their request to know where we're, we're going with this, and so, you're right, it could change, it will, it could change when we get actual numbers of people coming into the classes, but.
So we're basically up to what, sixty-seven, five or so? Sixty, sixty grand from the tech, and then another seventy-five hundred from the shuttle?
No, the shuttle was already on as a cut.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're at sixty.
We're already there. So we're just at about sixty.
But what about the music level funding? Wouldn't that have taken from the sixty that?
We're in sixty-eight thousand.
Yeah, we were at sixty-eight, and now we're at sixty.
So, we, I mean, we could, I would entertain the idea to say that, um, we would, you know, our priority would be to put it back into elementary staffing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion to put that sixty thousand dollars back into the elementary staff.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion about that?
I just want to make sure that, again, if it be, it's becoming a one-two or three-four, that those teachers are included with the group from Millville that is boring and bland.
Any information?
Even if it's a to-be-determined.
Yep, I agree.
All right, there's a motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you get that? They missed that whole thing. They're asking questions over there.
So, any, any cuts that we have made thus far, um, that result in savings to our budget line, we have chosen to prioritize those to make sure that they go forward into elementary school teaching positions. Staffing position, teachers in front of the classroom positions.
And that if one of them ends up being a one-two, Erin would like, was putting, have them go tour with the other split-level teachers.
If it only, let's say, by the time we're done, only adds one person, um, and it makes the most sense to get the most bang for our buck with also a split class in J F K or A F M, that those people would be involved in the discussions and of how split classrooms might work.
Well, that would bring, I, I, I mean, our lowest grades, highest class numbers right now, it, it should really go to a one-two split. It would bring, they're both right now slated for three sections of twenty-eight kids. If we bring that to one additional section, and it's a split classroom, you would have an average of twenty-four kids in second, first and second grade, by breaking up one group.
In the leadership.
Twenty-four.
Yep. Any, Tara, you, I heard a, yeah, you had something. Something else?
We had, um, put department heads. Are we talking about that anyway? We had put department heads on hold. We wanted Mike to talk to that, cause we wanted.
He responded to us on an email. He sent us their job descriptions.
We didn't get that.
I didn't get that.
Only me?
We didn't.
I don't know.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, Mike's still here.
You're the chosen one.
I guess.
So I, unfortunately, was not at the end of that meeting, but I heard that department heads were put on the table to be cut, so I sent, um, I believe it was Mr. Himmelberger, Ms. Reggio, and Ms. Cobb, the job description, um, to, to look at. Uh, I do have physical copies, because people have been asking, what do department heads do, or are there job descriptions? And give that to you, so you can take a look.
So, Mike, I, I don't know if you watch.
Yes, you do, absolutely.
Mike, I don't know if you watched the meeting, but we were trying to look at stipends as a whole, and many are contractual, except for department heads, apparently, and so that's why we went there.
So, I guess my, my only concern, because I know this came up a few years ago, is that, um, I look at my department heads as leaders in the building that hopefully keep the departments together, disseminate information, look at curriculum, run P L C meetings, department meetings, budgets, and so forth, and not having an assistant superintendent, I lean on my department heads to do some of that information. I don't believe there, it can be any discussion about trying to consolidate that until further contract negotiations. So I believe there's eight department heads. There's one in special ed, there's one in guidance, and there's one in every single department. And they, there is a stipends, but there's also an additional section or class to that. If we cut department heads, I'm not sure who I truly lean on to work on curriculum mapping and getting groups together, um, for that. That was a job description that I personally did not have of department heads prior to my coming to B M R, and that's something that we came up together and collaborated with last year. I mean, I will say, and again, I'm not looking to pit one person against another, but I'm at a point, too, with my foreign language department, where our Spanish one courses are on or Spanish two, there's thirty-two kids in a class. Cutting a US, or cutting our history teacher, um, we have classes of twenty-eight. Cutting our English teachers, did I say English or history?
History.
So cutting my English teacher, I have some classes of twenty-eight as well. So, we're talking about class sizes, I'm, so with that in mind, I'm also increasing class sizes, but I'm also, um, losing sections and electives. So there are some electives that we're no, no longer going to be offering, um, in history for, in English next year.
Are those some of the classes the kids signed up for already?
Correct, yep.
So that honestly adjusted.
A lot of the electives, uh, journalism, creative writing, um, that is cut. We have one less section of schools, or psychology, uh, intro to music, or, uh, history of music, uh, history through film, um, just a, a lot of the electives that, um, the kids decided to, to, to want or take are no longer on the table. So any discussion with department heads, I, I.
Sorry, I was gonna go somewhere else. The loss of journalism, is that gonna impact your PBS program?
Uh, it, it hasn't, because they've, they've worked separately. I guess that's, that's a, a good thing right now, because if they, they weren't, um, the journalism, yeah, there was a separate entity with the PBS. I, I wanted to see how those two teachers could collaborate and do a little more twenty-first century journalism, and journalism now, if you read, is not paper. It's all blogging and, and online platforms, um, but that, that hasn't happened, so. But if, if you could give me some idea about department heads, because that could possibly add another section, and I need to let department heads know.
Well, that, I mean, that.
Other than that, that's, that's on the table.
For me, I, I think I want the best, the best of both worlds here. I, I, after attending awards night the other night, which I've attended many times, but it, it, it was fresh off of this meeting, and we talked about department heads, and how many stood up and gave these amazing speeches about those kids, they, they knew the kids, they know, um, and they are, they are clearly doing this and more. I, I wish we could free up those blocks, the sections, and, and not lose the classes, and, you know, but of course, like you just said, that's probably going to be contractual.
Uh, yeah.
Because it is, it's a, it's per day, correct? It's not a weekly block, it's not a, it's.
So they have, so, uh, teachers are scheduled for five courses out of seven, and they have a prep, and they have a duty. So department heads teach four classes. They have a department prep duty, a prep, and then a duty. So they, they teach one less course, along with, with the, whatever the stipend is, seventeen fifty. And right now, every single department has a department head, including, uh, special ed, as well as guidance.
So special ed in the high school has a department head, but they only oversee the high school special ed teachers, not, so how many, how many are in the department, in that building?
Special ed?
Yeah. Like.
I believe seven. I'm, I'm not sure how many special ed teachers.
Two in guidance.
Yeah.
But we can't combine.
But again, it's contractual. I mean, we have, we had certain departments that had six or seven from years, years ago. Right now, foreign languages, there's three total.
Right.
Our science is at five, so it's, um, it's all over the place. I, I've seen certain schools that have curriculum leaders, one for humanities and one for, for STEM. You know, I've seen combined clusters, but, uh, the contract states that we have department heads at the high school, it's seventeen fifty, and they teach one less class. But would I say that there is a, a need for a specific type of person to help disseminate information?
Yes.
With, with Desi and curriculum and moving the ball, and not having five teachers in a room saying, you should talk about assessments now. I at least have somebody in the room that's driving the boat, that when I ask them to do something, I know that that's happening. My fear is that if I don't have department heads, or curriculum leaders, or whatever you want to call that position, I, I, I'm not sure what would be happening, especially not having an assistant superintendent that is driving technology initiatives and curriculum. Right now, it's, it's, it's your administrators going down to your team leaders, uh, at the, at the middle school, department heads at the high school.
All right. So we're good? They're not on the table? They're good? They're staying?
Thanks.
Anyone else, or can we? Anyone else, or can we wrap up this session?
I just had one more, sorry, question about, is there a central office position that can be either cut or reduced? Or are there any savings in central office?
Let's back to 1,000.
Is that 1,000?
Administration.
Four years ago, the business office was in disarray. I think that the audits have shown that not always. You can always cut and you can always add. You're talking about operating a school district with a lot of moving parts. With almost 300 staff. 22 million dollars. More than 200 resources, 24 million dollars. It's a lot of work. It takes, it takes the staff that we have. That's, that's why nothing was put on the table at the beginning.
Just throwing it out there where we're cutting, you know, we have teachers that we're cutting and everyone, you know, we're cutting everywhere. So I just wanted to make sure it was looked at, considered. I don't know, I don't know where or who. I'm just asking. I don't have a suggestion. I'm just.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? Our next schedule of the meeting is June 14. We will, at that point, put on the agenda having a community, a community meeting. Supertown, whatever you want to call it.
Two-town meeting.
Two-town meeting.
District-wide.
District-wide meeting. Community district meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?